We will call the board in the last everyone please mute and turn off the phones. And if everyone could please stand for the air in place. My friend.
They up here in-house audio is down.
Okay, Father, we are grateful to you for your love for us and we're grateful to you for our for our town. And we ask that in conducting the business of the town, you will help each one of us and convict us to be above reproach, to be respectful to one another, to be kind and genuine and just that everything we do and say will be pleasing to you and that we will represent you well. And pray that be careful with every penny that's spent of tax dollars and we will be, we will do everything responsibly in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, an endless republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, our audio is down, so the five of us need to remember to speak up when we're speaking. And if you do come forward to speak, is that my phone working?
No, sir, all the in-house audio is down, but the live streaming audio works. I'm waiting for a piece of hardware.
So if you come to speak up front, just remember you're facing this way, but you want the people in behind to back to to hear you. So let's all take that into consideration. Are there any public comments, the three-minute period we allow? And if you fill out a form, fill out your name and address and give it to our clerk, welcome to come forward either now or towards the end of the meeting. Good. Is there any motion to approve the agenda or any motion to change the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to remove item number four from the agenda, please.
Is there a second? Hearing none, motion dies. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will now skip down to old business item number three regarding a hazard mitigation grant from GMA.
The American Council, first item tonight is a consideration to approve the acceptance of a hazard mitigation grant from the Georgia Emergency Management Agency or GMA to fund required up there, excuse me, upgrades to the Lake Pendleton Dam. Back in 2018, the town received notification from Georgia's Safe Dams that the Lake Pendleton Dam had been upgraded to a category three-one dam. That designation indicates that a breach or a failure could result in a probable loss of life downstream. At that time, questions arose concerning the ownership of the dam, and it was determined that the town had a significant ownership, I don't know why I can't talk tonight, and responsibility because of public street versus destruction. The initial cost estimate to bring the dam into compliance was approximately $2 million. And in August 2019, the town applied for a 7525 hazard mitigation grant through GMA. Fast forward to last week, it's been several years. The town was notified by GMA that a grant awarded in the amount of $2,410,000 had been awarded to the town with a federal share of $1,807,500 and a local share of $602,500, along with subrecipient management costs of $21,000. The $21,000 subrecipient management cost does not require match and helps cover indirect costs, direct administrative costs and other administrative expenses. Upon acceptance of the grant, the town will be expected to, number one, cover the upfront costs of the upgrade and submit reimbursement requests as the project progresses and complete the project by October 1st, 2026. I do note that an extension may be requested if necessary. We don't want to go through that, but we, it is possible. Once the acceptance is approved by council, we will forward the executed documents to GMA and wait for their final letter of approval before giving everybody a final notification and move forward with the project. So again, this is $2,410,000 in upfront costs with a $21,000 reimbursement for management costs, and our our match will be $602,500. I believe back when all this was preliminary, we were, we were mentioned, we had estimated that to be around $550,000. So this is not too far off of what we had originally anticipated. And you'll remember, we've carried this forward every year since then, pretty much. And we've had to keep it on the books, and now we're able to, we're going to be able to get this project behind us and get that that cost off the book. So we're excited about that. Of course, staff recommends approval to accept the grant and to have the mayor execute the documents.
People of Lake Pendleton, what is their responsibility?
None at this time. Mr. Mr. Davenport, do you have anything to add to that?
Your down, your road, your responsibility.
No, completely.
There's some caveat to that with respect to some areas that might be shared ownership with the HOA, but they're novel compared to the substantial part of the work to be done.
Okay. And if one property owner, not, not the HOA, but if one property owner owns even 2% of the dam, which I thought I would call, that being the case, the two is just a number I've thrown out there.
Right.
If that person refuses to participate, what, how do we handle it?
Well, this is kind of a different forum to be asking that kind of question and get an answer. But I can tell you right now, if the person refuses to participate, you still have to do the work. We've got to get the dam upgraded. You don't have much of a choice.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Brandon. This is fantastic news. We've been going years and years hoping we get this grant, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since this has been so long in the process, are these numbers still valid, given the ticking up of cost?
We believe they are. There may be a couple of adjustments, and there is a mechanism to go back and 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 request more. Not guaranteed to get more, but as of the other day when we had our meeting, Mr. Yeager was confident in what we're looking at. So I'll let you all know if anything changes on that immediately, but yeah, right now, we're pretty confident with them.
We have the money in reserves. If we need to dive into that, we can reverse later.
Right, and the original assessment was, or estimate was $2 million. So it's what they're giving us is, you know, obviously 410,000 more. So we feel like we can make it happen within that, but we'll, like I said, we'll let you know as soon as possible if something changes.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the hazard mitigation grant from GMA to fund upgrades to Lake Pendleton Dam.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is to, the tree removal services on the Earth and Down and were specified. This is for a, to get bids. This is not a motion to remove the trees. Brandon, could you quickly present this to us?
Sure, I'll give you some background. So back in September, I was notified by our engineer Scott that he had been notified by another party, David Yeager, who was doing unrelated work on the dam for a spillway project, that, you know, he said, look, these, these trees don't belong on Earth and Dam. We recommend that you have them removed. That information was brought to me. I didn't like what I heard. I asked Scott, get a second opinion. I want, I want to know more about this. So Scott reached out to Schnabel Engineering. Schnabel Engineering is well-known as an expert in the field of dams. We're working with them on a couple of other projects. Schnabel came back with an email that explained why tree removal is important on Earth and dams. I shared that information with you all, and then we also had one-on-one, two-on-two meetings, and we discussed all of that. So between, you know, the three engineers giving us that information, I felt like it was important to try to move forward with this project after discussions with the engineers and council. I'll note that Shamrock Dam is not a regulated dam, but what we're, what we've been told is that a failure could result in property damage downstream, including to the CSX Railroad, which is adjacent, which could be a major liability for the town. I discussed the liability concerns with Mr. Davenport, and he also suggested that the trees should be removed to mitigate the town's future exposure. We presented this item on January 16th and was, were directed by council to obtain cost estimates for tree removal. Mr. Langford provided that information. That estimate was of $166,680, and we presented that information on February 6th and asked for approval for move forward, and that was for an RFP. I want to make that very clear. We're not yet asking for permission to do the work. We are simply asking for permission to move forward to get the RFP out. We didn't want to waste anybody's time if council didn't want to pursue this project. One council member was absent and another voted against the measure, so the item failed. And then Mr. Hunter requested for the item to be brought back up tonight, which is allowed under our charter. If approved, staff will direct and then issue an RFP for this project. Bids will be collected and then presented back to council at a future date for consideration to move forward with the final project. So that's, that's where we are. That's how we got here, and and that's what we're asking for tonight is just a permission to move forward to get an RFP.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for either Brandon or for for Dennis? Scott's not here, so I guess the two of you are the main ones.
Brandon, go over the insurance. You had one time and mentioned, and just clarify because I get things wrong, that our insurance doesn't cover us anymore for that.
Right, so, so we have two types of insurance. We have our liability insurance and we have our our property insurance. Our liability insurance covers us at a cap of $2 million. Our property insurance no longer covers dams at all because of the cost of maintaining them, the cost of, you know, problems that arise with dams and things of that nature. So we cannot insure our dams any longer for property damage. And as you know, as we just talked about in the last, you know, dam upgrades and dam mitigation and dam maintenance are very expensive. So that's, that's the issue. This came about, what, about a year ago that they stopped insuring dams? And and our insurance company, Germa, they went out to 20 something different carriers, and none of them would provide insurance for dams. And so we, and again, we're capped at $2 million on the liability side.
So by by removing the trees, how does that mitigate our responsibility?
Okay, so imagine all the storms we've had lately. So what FEMA suggests, Safe Dam suggests, all the, all the agencies that that regulate dams and work on dams, the removal of trees, number one, if you have a storm come through and you have straight line winds or tornadoes, trees topple over, you have a root ball. That root ball is going to significantly impact the integrity of the dam. Not only that, as trees die and their root system dies, it creates a void in the dam. So you could have a, you could have a root system sitting there, the tree never toppled, or the tree did topple and the root ball's still sitting there. Those roots are going to die, and and they're, they're going to create a void. So the removal eliminates virtually the the probability of a storm coming through, topping over trees that destroy the dam, or the root balls rotting and causing those voids. Because what they do with the larger trees, I believe it's anything over eight inches, they actually have to pull all the roots and they backfill it with a grout. That way, it eliminates the the probability of any of that rot, the holes getting larger or seepage. So that's the the non-engineer answer that I, that I'm prepared to give on that.
Yeah, that's.
But but so if you, if you were to do that mitigation, you're no longer worried about winds, you're no longer worried about trees rotting and dying and the 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 root ball or the root system causing you problems, because you're going to come back and you're going to fill it in, and then you're going to, you're going to cover that earth and dam with a, with with grass to hold the the soil in place.
Are there any signs at this point that any of the trees are in distress or they're dying? Have, I mean?
No, sir, no, but my understanding, though, is that that's, that's really not the point. It's, it's because you're, you're not just concerned about the rotting of trees, which I assure you, there's, you know, probably a couple hundred trees out there. You got to figure a couple of them are probably getting to the end of their life. But the the big concern, especially in this area for us, if you look at the storms we just had, is is the wind damage. And and another thing that an engineer will tell you, the presence of the trees makes it extremely hard to inspect the dam. And so that's another concern that they brought up. So, you know, that, that's.
We, we expect it.
Not to my knowledge, no. I could be, I could be wrong on that, but.
I just want to clarify one point. There, there's been a lot of misinformation out there about this. The trees that we're talking about are the trees between, if you're staring at the lake, the left side path and the railroad tracks.
Right, that's it.
Just those trees. We're not talking about all the trees around the entire lake.
Right.
Just the trees over on that left side.
The southeast side of the dam, so.
So are the trees going to be clear cut all the way to the railroad's property, all of them?
It will be to the base of the dam, yes, just on our property. I mean, yes, to the property line, yes, but it has to go to the foot of the dam.
But if there's any, from the foot of the dam to the railroad's property, we'll get those too?
No, that'll, that'll, those will be left.
So it won't necessarily be clear cut then?
Not necessarily. Whatever's left at the foot of the dam towards the railroad, yes, those would be left.
Going back up the hill.
Right.
Which is not many.
Right.
From, for me, those trees have been there for 100 years. There's no distress on any of them. By taking those trees down, it doesn't eliminate what liability we're still going to have if that so-called dam could breach, would breach. And I, I mean, certainly, I'm not an engineer and I'm not going to have to overthink somebody, but I can't imagine that there's enough water in in Shamrock Lake to ever affect anything that's in the area, including the railroad. But I don't have those figures. I could certainly get them if we needed them. But I, I, I still say that those, that those trees need to stay there. There's no, there's no purpose for us to take those down. Because we, we, we're not gaining anything by it. We're still going to be liable for any damages if, in fact, that should happen. And after all these years, I think the odds are pretty good that nothing's going to happen to those, those trees or to the, to the, to the dam that you're referring to.
What is the lifetime? If they've been there for 100 years, that's bad news because they're reaching the end of their lives.
That's an argument.
So what is the life?
I've got some trees that are over 200 years old on my property, and they're healthy as can be.
I mean, if it was a forest of of pines, I could see that possibility, but I don't think there's that many pines in there. I just, I just don't see the purpose of taking them down, besides the sound barrier that it's going to. And I know this is, doesn't mean much to most of us, I guess, up here, the sound barrier when that train goes by a couple times a day. And how ugly it's going to make our park look just terrible. And I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think it's something that we need to rush into. If you're that adamant in doing this, I think you should put it on the, put it on, put it on a ballot in November. Let the people decide what they want to do with that, and then, then it's off of us.
That's why I want to be, I want to be clear real quick. I am not adamant.
I know.
I am delivering information. I know that, but.
We're talking.
Staff is delivering information to council. You guys have to make a collective decision for what's best for the town going forward. If aesthetics are what's best and y'all vote for that, staff will honor that. If if the vote is to move forward, then we, then we move forward. My job is simply to provide the information that's been presented to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I speak for a second? I'll prepare a statement because late yesterday evening, kind of like unbeknownst to me. Can you hear me? Okay, let me speak up. Last night, I was at my kitchen table and I got a text message saying, hey, there's some talk on social media about this issue. And I don't have social media. I like to spend my evenings with my kids. I don't dabble. So it's, it's really hard when people communicate that way for me to get the information. I do have my personal cell phone number on the website for anybody to call. I know some people that are sitting out there have called me personally. But when, when people have questions about an action that I might take here, I do expect someone to just reach out and call me direct and ask, well, you know, Dan, why did you, why did you perform the action that you did? So that they can hear directly from me. And so I thought it could be best that coming here that I will prepare a statement about why I decided to perform the action that I did to council and the public. So I'm going to read it. Like I said, unbeknownst to me, last night I was informed that some comments were made on social media regarding my role in bringing an agenda item forward to tonight's meeting. This came as a shock to me because I did not receive a single phone call from anyone asking why I I chose to add an agenda item to tonight's meeting. To bring clarity to my actions, I owe it to this council and the citizens of Tyrone to explain why I've executed my right as stated in our charter to bring an issue back to agenda. Before directly addressing this issue, I would love to provide a little context, so please bear with me for a second. As Mr. Perkins explained, in September, we received a message from our town manager stating that there was an issue at Shamrock Park related to the trees on the dam. I want to skip the park because you guys know that information. And I'm going to say shortly thereafter, I stopped by the hardware store so that I can speak to fellow council member Billy Campbell, where I told him in that, in at the hardware store, that I was not in favor of those trees coming down. I'm in the park all the time at every first Friday event. I love the park. My kids play in the park. I would really hate to see those trees come down. So then, fast forward, I go a little later on today, I stop by Brandon's office and I tell him the exact same thing. You know, I love the trees. Trees are beautiful. I don't want the trees to come down. He says, I'm in the process of gathering information. I'll let you know more information as it becomes available. So then a few days later, Brandon stated to council that he consulted with the additional engineers, gathered data from several organizations that oversee dam safety, and reached out to our town attorney, Dennis Davenport. And as a result of Mr. Perkins' findings, we, the following information we found to be both factual and true. Five things. Trees do not belong on Earth and Dams, as you heard before. The root structure of trees on dams could compromise the structural integrity of a dam. Three, a breach could potentially cause damage to both public and private property, including but not limited to CSX. Four, a study would have to be conducted to ascertain the potential risk of the dam, of dam failure, and the amount for the study was estimated to cost us over $40,000. Our, and then the last thing is that our insurance no longer covers that dam damage, and our liability is capped at $2 million. So with that information, we had to move forward with the information that we had. So what we decided to do is we asked our town engineer, Scott, could you get us an estimate so that we can figure out how much this would actually cost? Because we were, we have a $40,000 number to conduct the study to see if, how much would this actually cost if something goes wrong? Or maybe we have a $40,000 number that says we can fix this problem for $40,000, and then maybe we do something about it. But we don't know that information yet, so we asked for it. Then the information comes back, $166,000 is a conservative estimate by a member of our team, our town engineer. After getting this information, we wanted professional companies that do this for a living to issue out, we wanted him to issue out a RFP so that we can get some numbers, have comparable numbers between multiple companies so that we can look at a comparison across the board. Perhaps that number comes in lower, perhaps those numbers are higher. We don't know. We don't have that information, so we can't make a decision because we don't have that information. So at last meeting, we, we made, we made a motion, I made a motion, for our town, for our town engineer to proceed with getting those RFPs. At that particular meeting, after I made the motion, Councilman Waylon here, she seconded the motion. Councilman Campbell said no to the motion, and Councilman Fer was not present. Unfortunately, the way that our, you know, the way that our charter is set up is if three are not, three council members are not in favor of something, it can't move forward. Plus, we all kind of, you know, we're in this space where we kind of occupy about a quarter of of the population vote because it's four, right? So all of Tyrone is supposed to be represented and, and your representatives. And not having the other representative here to weigh in, I just didn't think that that was right for such an important issue that can affect safety. So I was, so it was in my opinion that we needed to revisit this with another council member present who was not present before because the argument has been, one person, me, has called for something that that already was dealt with before. But in the reverse, you had two council members who voted for something and one council member who voted against it, and that's why I didn't move forward. So the logic in that is, in my opinion, it's flawed. It's better when we have all of us together and we can discuss these things. Now, I know that all of those things happen, but I want to state, for the record, I want to say that even though I initially wanted the trees to stay, I personally could never choose the aesthetics of trees over the safety of our citizens and the financial future of our town. I will explain that briefly. What I mean by that. If our dam insurance does not cover damage, and let's say it's a once-in-a-hundred-year storm, and the unthinkable does happen, a tree does fall, and the dam, and and we take damage to the dam, we are responsible. And when I say we, the, the citizens of Tyrone, the taxpayers' dollars will go to the repair of the dam and any liability that's incurred beyond that in private property. And I just don't think, I personally don't think that that would be responsible for us to allow that to happen when we have, when, when we're still trying to gather information to, to, to figure out how to address or tackle this situation. So for, for everybody who had all of these different and varying opinions about perhaps I wanted all the trees to come down in the park, that's, that's not true. Perhaps we know somebody who, who has a tree company and we're trying to get them paid, because I, I saw that on social media as well. And I just find it very interesting that nobody would pick up the phone and call or ask, like, or, or talk to us about these issues. And and I would be happy to, to spend my time talking to you about it because I feel like that's what I was elected for. And so I'm never going to choose something that, that I think is right or beautiful over the safety of our citizens or the financial future of our town. And so the, the last point that I would like to address, though, is that there was a statement over and over again about urgency. They said, what is the urgency in the matter? In my quiet time, where I like to, to, to go into my little prayer closet, I had a thought, and that thought was simple. And that thought was simple. When you go to the dentist and you get an exam and they check you and they said, you got a cavity. And then they say, and then the dentist says, I can fill that cavity for you for eighty bucks. And you say, go and get wallet, you got eight bucks and you're like, nah, I, I'm gonna pass for right now. I'm not gonna do anything about it. And then you go, then one day you wake up in the middle of the night in pain and nothing is open. So you have to wait until the morning. You get an emergency call, you go onto your dentist and you find out that now you have a root canal. And it costs you way more than it initially would have cost you to repair that issue when it was first discovered. And I feel like that's the situation that we are in now. Even though we don't have numbers from a reputable company, which we would like to get to, that's, that's the point of the reason why I voted the way that I voted and the reason why I thought it would be wise for us to reconsider and talk about this as a collective group and not just three council members in the mayor. Um, I would just ask my fellow council members, you know, to please think about like, not putting the aesthetics of the trees. Because we can do, we can beautify that area. We can, we can set up a design. We can, we can do anything that we can that would not affect the structural integrity of the dam without compromising public safety. And that's what I would ask you to consider because that's what I had to consider when I arrived at the point where I decided it's better to vote, to move that forward. And that's, and that's all I had to say about that. Thank you for your time. Uh, anyone else?
I would just like to ask Mr. Davenport, was there anything said about our liability or anything in legal terms that was said incorrectly from any of the council members or even from Brandon? Cause we're not, we're not legal experts, but you are. And as far as if there were a breach to the dam and we had not taken any, uh, preliminary or precautionary, uh, actions, what, what, in a time of emergency, when there is that hundred year storm like we have seen lately, I will mention, um, how are we to mitigate that and be responsible both ways? Was anything said that was incorrect? Are, are we hearing this correctly? If we don't mitigate the problem, we're, we're liable to private property owners and CSX. Is that correct?
That is correct. And you have to look at this from the perspective of management of risk. Because I can't tell you with certainty that you're gonna have a hurricane tomorrow, next month, or next year. I don't know that the past would indicate that from the last hundred years, what's gonna happen next year. But I do know this, if you have trees on earth and dam and that tree is toppled by high winds, it will damage your dam. That's why Safe Dams, the folks at EPD, all of the, all of the engineering firms that are recognized by Safe Dams as engineers to work on dams in the state of Georgia, all collectively follow that best practice, which is do not put trees on earth and dams because it impacts the integrity of an earth and dam. If I'm not mistaken, Peachtree City dealt with this, this issue some three years ago with trees on earth and dam. They had to remove a number of trees off the backside of Lake Peachtree for this very reason. That will then with drought to make sure that you protect the integrity of the dam. So the, the unthinkable happens. The high wind comes in, the dam is breached. I will say, having it not classified as a category two or a category one is helpful, but that doesn't mean you won't cause any damage. There will be damage. The question is, how much? How much damage can a volume of water do when it rushes toward an incline not too far away from the toe of the dam that supports a railroad track? I don't know the answer to that question, but it's something to think about. The other thing to think about is this, if you do take proactive measures and remove those trees from the dam and you fill in the void with drought to make sure you protected the integrity, does that mean you won't have a dam failure? No, it doesn't mean that. But again, you're managing risk. What is the risk of having a dam breached by a tree that's not there? Pretty ze- pretty low, pretty zero, okay? That risk is taking that risk away. Are there other risks? Sure. Erosion over time. You have to inspect it regularly. What I also heard is your inspections are impacted by the ability to go in and the other trees are there. How can you inspect a dam with trees on it? How do you know what the integrity of the earth and dam is if the trees are interfering from that proper inspection? So everything points toward removal of the trees on earth and dam. All of the authorities that I've looked at and the folks that I've talked to are all consistent with that. It is the best practice. The trees shouldn't have been there to begin with. They're there. You're on notice now that it's a problem. The other part of the risk management is, before you knew it was a problem, you went about your business and didn't even have this conversation. Now you know it's a problem. You're gonna be judged not by what you didn't do when you didn't know, but what did you do when, when you knew the problem was there? Do you, do you handle the problem or do you let the problem go by whatever you wanna do it? So management of risk, that's what you're looking for. Without insurance, you're gonna pay whatever needs to be done to fix that dam. We talked tonight about Lake Pendleton Dam. I'll just use that as a comparison. The only reason it's a comparison is because it's a dam. When you found out that you're responsible for Lake Pendleton Dam and you were told there was damage to the, uh, there, there needed to be a, a, uh, uh, structural, uh, work done because it was reclassified to a category one, which means a, a breach could be potential loss of property or loss of life. You're spending two point four million dollars for that. Thankfully, one point eight million of that's coming from the federal government and you're picking, you're picking up, you know, your share of six hundred and two thousand. That's not the numbers we're talking about with this earth and dam here as far as fixing it. But how do we know what type of damage a breach that earth and dam could cause to a railroad that can't run a train on the track because the integrity of their railroad is now in question because it's been eroded away with the rushing water from the dam? That's worst case scenario. I got it. But if worst case scenario happens and you're capped at two million dollars in liability, where does the rest of the money come from? So you're asking the right questions, but nothing is gonna give you any guarantees. That's why you look at the management of risk. Are you better off by taking proactive measures? Well, you're gonna reduce that risk substantially. Are you gonna be protected completely? Probably not. But I would say your protection and your management of risk is much better off by being proactive than by le- leaving the status quo and hoping for the best.
Thank you.
Have, have we had in the last ten years, or do we see a potential in the future where we would have a private property owner make changes to the dam? Meaning, I don't wanna run into a situation where we're saying, do as we say, not as we do. Anybody following me? Is there any private property owner that owns a dam that they have some trees on and we might come in and say, similar to, uh, Castle Lake Dam? Now, in this, in that case, it was EPD that told them they had to get those trees cut down. But what if it was us to tell them that they had to get those trees cut down? And then they go back and look at the minutes from twenty twenty-five and they say, so you didn't cut your own trees down, but you want me to cut mine? Is that a potential, or am I giving a hypothetical that's not realistic?
I understa- I follow your train of thought, but we don't, because we don't regulate dams, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be in that situation, but I understand what you're, what you're saying.
So that would be, they would be saying to EPD, well, you're gonna make me do it, but the town didn't do it?
Right. That, that would be the only, the only source of regulation for that.
And again.
And there are so many lakes around with trees. I mean, I can name you a dozen right now with trees on the dam.
I know.
That people could careless.
I have trees on our dam, but it's my personal responsibility, not the town.
Yep.
To be clear. And I stated this before in a prior meeting. I'm okay with that risk as a person and for my personal property. But for the town, I have to consider more than just myself and my feelings. I have to consider every taxpayer shelling out money to fix something that we could take care of, just to be transparent.
Could, can I add one other thing? One of the things that I think is, is actually pretty cool about having this, this happen when it's happening is that we have a, a line item in our sploß uh, for the repair. So we have some money in, in, in this line item to be able to address the repair. The, the beauty of it being in a sploß is that a sploß is a one cent tax that's collected all throughout the county and from anybody who comes into our county and they spend money, that's being funded from that source, which means that Tyrone citizens are not footing the bill for our dam, um, mitigation. And then even if we decided to do a beautification project in the park, we also have in our, in our latest sploß, line items for that as well. And so we can actually mitigate and beautify this area with a collective amount of money from a sploß versus if we incur our liability in the future, that will come directly from Tyrone citizens. And, and I think that's also something worth waiting.
Do, do we have that tree removal on Shamrock Dam in a sploß?
We have dam repair
So that could be any dam?
That we could, that we can use for this, yes.
Oh, okay. Again, this is, this is for an RFP. It's not for removal of trees. Um, are there any other of the items of misinformation that were floating around that we should clarify? I did give one, one person that contacted me, which I greatly appreciate. I've only heard from one person. And I do encourage, if you see anything and it just doesn't make sense, please contact us. Um, I don't know what, what all you all heard, uh, what kind of calls you got or anything like that, but. Anything else? Uh, our public comment period will be, uh, towards the end.
I thought you allowed us to speak at each.
At the end. No, the, if, if you have an agenda with you, you'll see public hearing at the beginning and public hearing at the end. So unless it's a, a public hearing item, uh, that's, that's how it works.
Changes.
Um, okay, um, anything else?
My motion.
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to accept the hazard danger, oh, excuse me, excuse me. I'll make a motion to approve to move forward with an RFP for treatment of mobile services on an earth dam at Shamrock Park.
Second.
Motion second. Any more discussion? Any questions from councilor staff? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I vote aye for approval. Um, all right, item number five. Brandon, do you wanna, do you have just a, a quick briefing and then a counselor, I'm gonna come to you. You have the most, uh, you have the most insight on the side, so be ready.
Okay, uh, next item is consideration to adopt a town charter amendment of Article Two, Chapter Two, regarding, regarding quorum and voting. Our current charter establishes that the mayor and three council members shall constitute a quorum and shall be authorized to transact business of the council. Voting on the adoption of ordinances shall be taken by vote, voice vote, and ayes and nays shall be recorded in the journal, but any member of the council shall have the right to request a roll call vote. A minimum of three votes shall be required for the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. The mayor shall vote only in the event of a tie. Uh, these provisions have been prevented, prevented us, I'm sorry, I still can't talk, prevented us from holding meetings and or moving items forward in the past when members of council have been unable to attend meetings. Other problems arise under the current provisions when council members feel the need to recuse themselves from a vote as the three vote requirement may not be met. Uh, this is especially true if more than one member of council felt the need to recuse themselves. While rare, this scenario is not out of the question given the size of the town. And conversely, if one council member, uh, is absent, a single contrary vote carries the item as the mayor may only vote to break ties. All of this could result in a multitude of legal issues and it is detrimental to the town's operations. Given these noted issues, Mayor Dial, um, asked Mr. Davenport to review the charter, provide us a proposed solution. His recommendation was that, and I quote, "The mayor and council reduce its quorum requirement to the presence of three elected officials with a majority vote of those present being sufficient to pass a motion."
Okay, thank you. Uh, just to give a little bit of timeline on this, uh, uh, Mr. Davenport came to me with concern about our, our quorum requirement being that it's the, uh, of one of, if not the strictest uh, around. And, uh, so, um, I asked him to provide a little bit supporting information, which he did, uh, which I had conversations with, um, with council just to let them know that this was coming. And, um, instead of me trying to, uh, regurgitate what, uh, you have offered, uh, Dennis, I'm just gonna let you brief us on this.
I'll be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I come to you with a, a bit of a background in representing governments over the years and I just wanted to make sure that, I know most of you know that background, but just to make sure that this is where these comments are coming from. Uh, I've been re- representing city governments and county governments since nineteen ninety-three. That's pretty much all I did. Uh, I have been held offices in state organizations for city attorneys, for county attorneys, uh, been state hearing officers for, for boards of tax assessors, et cetera. So my work is working with local government. That's, that's why I specialize in. I have, to give you an example, currently three government clients, two city, a city, a town, and a county. I have a city that has five elected officials. They have what's called a weak mayor system. A weak mayor system generally is where you have four council members and a mayor and the mayor runs the meeting. And when it's time to vote, the only people to vote are the council members. And the only reason the mayor would ever vote is if there's a tie. Sounds familiar. That's pretty much what you have. The difference between what you have and what they have is their quorum is three elected officials. And they don't have a three vote majority to make anything pass by a vote of three. I have a county client, you all know it's Fayette County. They have five elected officials. They don't elect a chairman from the public at large. They elect the chairman every year in their January meeting of the five sitting members of the board commissioners. They do have a three vote affirmative requirement. The difference is every commissioner can vote at any time on anything. So if four commissioners are present, you still need three commissioners to vote for something, but all four commissioners are capable of voting, not just three of the four. If you have three commissioners present, you still need a unanimous vote for those three commissioners. But keep in mind, there are only three commissioners there. They can lead up a meeting with three commissioners in a county of a hundred and twenty thousand people. I have been exposed to a number of governments in the metro area and across the state. And while I'm not gonna categorically say this is the strictest quorum requirement I've seen, I will say I've not seen as strict a quorum requirement anywhere. It could exist. I've not seen it. The reason it becomes an issue is you've had this happen before where somebody is sick. They're not here. It happens. That's life. You know, you have to deal with things as they come. If you have a council member not here and you couple that with a three vote requirement and the mayor can't vote, you're putting yourself in a position of two people voting to do something, one person saying no. You've got a majority of your council present, but the action doesn't go forward because you don't have three saying yes. If the mayor could vote, it would be more like Fayette County where four people had to vote. Well, of the four people here, only three can vote. So you've hamstrung yourself by how, how you conduct business. That's a procedure that you can address or not. If you're okay with that, that's fine. It leads to some unintended consequence in my opinion, but that's something for you to decide as a group if you're okay with that. That's something for you to decide as a group if you're okay with that. The biggest concern I have, however, is it's not unreasonable to find yourself in a position. Where one of you may be conflicted out because you have a relation with. A family relation with a petitioner that comes to you for rezoning. You can, you say, I recuse, and somebody else lives in the area where the rezoning is and they recuse. That petitioner can't do anything with his or her property in the town of Tyrone. They can never get a meeting before the mayor and council. Because you can never see the quorum and you can never conduct a vote. Now, I'm asking you, uh, how fair is that? It's it's never happened before, it may never happen again, it's like the tree on the dam, you know, it may never happen. But how would you like to do that petitioner that can't come before you and get something done to your property? Because you're only talking to three people and three out of five generally is good wherever you go, but not in Tyrone. You can't do anything with that if one of those three is the mayor and the other two are councilors, you don't have a quorum. Not only do you not have a quorum, you can't vote. Because if it's a two to nothing vote, it's not a tie and the mayor can't vote. That's a real problem that you're facing. You've never faced it before and somebody will probably tell me, I've been doing this for so many years, it's never happened, and you're absolutely right. But what do you do when it does happen? Because it's not beyond the realm of impossibility, it's very possible. And as you get bigger and you have those relationships intermingle and you have those recusal issues come up. It's bound to happen if you keep your restrictions so high. People ask me fairly regularly when I, not just in Tyrone, but in Union City and in Fayette County. Should I recuse myself? And if you've been, if you've asked me that question, you probably know what my answer is. What do you mean?
Do you think you should recuse yourself?
Why? And the reason I ask that question is. I am not the one that's doing the voting up there. If you're in in your heart of hearts feel conflicted and you cannot weigh the information before you and come to a fair and unbiased decision. You're right, you should refuse yourself. Those things happen. Don't exacerbate the problem by preventing business of the town from going forward. Because your quorum requirements and your voting requirements are so stringent. It hasn't happened yet, but I'm here to tell you when it does happen, you don't have a remedy. And I can see it happening in the not too distant future with the way this town is developing, it's bound to happen. And I would ask that you proactively look at this and realize. While you might be used to something for the last ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. You've got places with populations five, ten, twenty times your population that existed this way ever since they started. And it's not been a problem because the first issue is. You gotta have people either not come to a meeting or recuse themselves. That doesn't happen here that often, doesn't happen in other places that often. When it happens there, they can take a hit and still go, they can take two hits and still go. And I've never seen it come to three hits because that's just now you get into the realm of close to being impossible. But I've seen it take one and two hits here fairly regularly with respect to a combination of the quorum or the voting requirement. And it produces some results that are unintended. So I've given you my legal perspective, I've given you the experience that I've had in thirty plus years in representing governments. And I understand even listening to that, you still may feel like. You like the way things are, you don't want to change, I respect that. I'm not here to twist your arm to do one thing or another, but I'm here to let you know that this is for you to open your eyes and understand. This is a problem that could very well happen, and if it does, what's your answer if you keep these restrictive uh. Quorum requirements and voting requirements? Because that petitioner is gonna be told, I'm sorry, we can't accept your application because we can't put together a quorum and we and we can't vote. That's not a good position to be in.
In your opinion, Dennis, what happens if an applicant falls in that situation? What's their remedy for that?
Well, if I'm that applicant, and I'm not trying to advise a future applicant what to do, but if I can't get remedy before the local governing authority. I don't have any choice but to go to the legal system and get my redress from the legal system.
You're talking.
Some type of action in court because the town is preventing me from using my property properly. I can't even go to the town for a rezoning, that's that's what it could come down to.
Where we would be the defendant, we would be sued.
You would be, it would be probably termed as some type of declaratory judgment. And action because they're being adversely impacted because they can't come to you to get any type of hearing on property to be rezoned. Because they claim and show evidence that this property as zoned cannot be developed. And they need to fix that, but they have no way to fix that because they can't get a hearing before the town because you don't have enough people to vote. That's a real possibility here.
Again, there's been some misinformation up there, um, unfortunately. Uh, but um, and I did have some, uh, two people email me on this again that I appreciate. Um, but um, thank you for that briefing, I think, as well, do you have a question or comment?
I was gonna say if the petitioner was to come and that that was the was the scenario where two people had to recuse themselves. At that time, we could go back to this if we so choose and say, look, just give us a month or six weeks. We have to advertise, we have to change to change our charter at that point.
That's a very good potential remedy, and I'd like to, that brings up another issue I should have brought, I should have talked about. Uh, let's talk about just a charter revision process and I'll I'll respond to what you were saying, council member. In the state of Georgia, counties and cities have the authority to pass reasonable ordinances. To conduct whatever they feel is in the best interest of their town, et cetera, exercise the authority for the public health, safety, and welfare. You have that inherent authority in your charter, it's there, all cities and counties have that authority. Cities have additional authority with respect to their charters, and I I exclude counties, but counties don't have charters. Cities have charters that are created by the legislature, counties are political subdivisions of the state, they're they're different from cities in that regard. But the city's charter can be revised by duly enacted ordinances of the governing authority. You have that ability to do that through what's called home rule. You can change your charter, even though the legislature created you with the charter from the legislature. You as a governing authority can make changes to that charter, but there are some caveats to that. There is a statute that has probably nine different exceptions to what I just said. As long as what you're doing doesn't go into any one of those nine different exceptions. You can take action as a body to revise your charter. What we're proposing tonight does not fall within any of those nine exceptions, it's something you can do through home rule. And it takes two public meetings to do that, it takes significant advertising to do that. And it can be done in thirty to sixty days. So you're absolutely right, it can be done in thirty to sixty days, but think about it, if I'm the petitioner today and that's your message to me. And I do I do everything properly, you're probably talking about closer to ninety days to get the advertising windows correctly. And then once that's done, I believe it's probably the first day of the next calendar month that it becomes effective, that's generally how those things work. Then they can make application for rezoning, which takes another sixty to ninety days to go through the process. So you're looking at about a six month process minimum, that's if everything works out correctly. Any hiccups, it can go easily to eight, nine months, ten months a year. So that's a remedy, and thank you for bringing that up, and that can be handled that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, Eric, I have some things I need to uh read on behalf of David Barlow.
Sure.
Uh, he wanted me to say that the city of Fairburn uh modified their charter in nineteen twenty-three the last time. Uh, and I believe the last time. Uh, Tyrone did theirs was amended in nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen seventy-four, per his words. Sonoia, they had a charter amendment November fifth, two thousand and twelve to diminish the mayor's power and impose term limits. And then they had a new charter that was voted on in two thousand and thirteen, which was unanimous. Um, this one here is uh. It doesn't say where it is, but it's uh, I think uh, maybe Brooks, is that where Dan Langford?
Mm-hmm.
Modify modifications to charter in nineteen ninety via legislature to stagger term periods. And then Palmetta um uh had amended multiple times over the years, nineteen sixty-six through nineteen ninety-two. And that's the summary of what he gave me, so.
We amended our charter in two thousand and eight?
We did make some amendments to our charter since I've been here, yes.
And that was just you and me?
Yeah, I remember that, but this is, this is what he gave me, just, you know, and asked me to read it, he couldn't be here.
Okay. All right, um, you don't have any other questions for Dennis or? Anybody else getting comments?
I just have a comment, I just don't, I just don't think we need to change this charter, it's worked pretty good for us. I mean, I've been on here nineteen years and I haven't foreseen any problems. Uh, sure, there's a person out every now and then, but we've always been able to carry on business. Uh, I just don't see a reason to change it, I don't, I don't understand the purpose of it.
Since I've been on council, I don't ever remember the time where we've had that issue. And uh, in all due respect to Mr. Davenport, who I respect very much and I think he's uh, he he's top notch. Uh, I don't think, I agree as well that I don't think it's, it gives the mayor too much strength. And we are a weak mayor system and I think it deserves to stay the way that it has. Don't fix what isn't broken. Um, I understand the issue going down the road, Jessica's uh, Jessica's suggestion may be a good out if we come into that. But listening to all of this, it appears to me that we're, I get the feeling that there's something that we're not being told or there's something that's coming down the bike. That we're not aware of yet as a council. And if that's the case, then we should know about that, but it just appears that we we're we're putting up our defenses or or figuring out how to. How to resolve a situation that may be coming down the thing. Maybe there's some new development in here that we don't know about, but if that's the case, then then one thing. But if we're just doing it just to protect ourselves from some future event, then I I certainly can't see the reason we need to do that.
Wait, are you implying that you that you're not, that you're being kept in the dark about something?
No, I'm not implying that, it's just.
You're saying.
I'm saying that by listening to all this conversation, that all these scenarios that could come place, and we've never heard this before. And I'm just, you know, it just makes me think that maybe there's something else that's out there that we're not aware of, that's all. I'm not saying that we're being kept in the dark about anything, we're just.
But that's what you said.
I'm saying that we're, it sounds like we're trying to prepare for something that may be coming, and I, that's all, that's all. And but if there, if that's not the case, then I don't see any reason why we should change it.
All right, you also said this gives me too much power here.
Right, it makes it makes.
Tell me what you're talking about.
It makes more of a strong mayor in the sense that you've got two council people and yourself that you can make decisions with. I feel a lot more comfortable that there's three people here making that decision along with you.
All right, two, two people and the mayor can make a decision right now. We just did it, we just had a three, three.
Only in, only in a time.
Right, only in a time, but you've had, you've at least had.
It's not a strong mayor system, it's still a weak mayor system, okay? How many, how many people made a decision last last meet with?
Three.
Two of our votes, but how many people actually affected the decision?
One.
So how is that any different?
But at least you've had three voices that were involved in it.
All right, but you control both votes as a single individual, so how is, how is this more? Uh, loose than that?
It is, I'm not gonna, you know, an argumental, I'm just saying that my perspective, so.
I I just wanted, I was gonna ask Dennis, could could you reflect on on that statement about it gives the mayor too much power? And does it effectively change what we deem as a weak mayor system and change that to a strong mayor system or some something like that?
I don't recall that there was anything, anything that I said that affected the powers of the mayor. If you do anything to affect the powers of elected officials, you need to go to the legislature to do that, you don't have the authority to do that. What I'm suggesting that you do is to be able to conduct a meeting with three elected officials present. If one of those elected officials happens to be the mayor and the vote is two to zero, the mayor is still not voting. You have two people who vote to do something. And if you didn't, if you had a quorum requirement of four elected officials, you couldn't even conduct a meeting, much less vote. So tonight, you had two elected officials vote to do something that was joined by the mayor, I understand that. I don't think you're doing anything to affect the power. You have to ask yourself, why do you have three people at a meeting to begin with? Well, because two weren't there. If two think the meeting is that important, they need to be there, let's be there. You control that, I understand illness occurs, and I'm not trying to fault anybody for not showing up. But I don't understand an argument that says this would give the mayor more power because we've done nothing to affect the mayor's power. It just allows a meeting to occur where one could not have occurred before. And if this body is fine with the way it is now, again, my objective is just to open your eyes to what I see as a problem. If you don't want to address the problem tonight, that's fine, I've done, I've done all I can do.
Well, I hate that this has been made into something about me.
But it's not you personally.
You said it.
You said it.
You're the one that brought it up.
Brooke, the mayor.
Okay, no, and let me be clear.
I don't care what it's like.
Other than I think that someone should be able to have due process if they bring something to us. That's the only reason I care, to be clear, on the record. So for somebody to say that this is something that's kind of, something's going on in the dark and gives me too much power, I mean, that's completely out of line.
I apologize if I upset you.
I mean, it's because of the power.
Worded it the same thing.
So, oh, anyone else?
I I would just like to ask a question because I'm not aware, but I know, um, Mr. Mayor, you had a prolonged illness, a period that you were out. And this um fur was the mayor pro temp during that time, was there any a time during that extended period of in and out? That a petitioner was denied their ability to present their petition?
I don't think so.
I'm not aware of there being any time that I've been involved with the town of Tyrone that this has happened.
I don't either.
But I al- I also know that with your growth and as things get more complex. You're bringing that possibility closer and closer to reality, and I'm just letting you know. It's, it's a best practice, in my opinion, to make sure that what the mayor's saying, you have the ability to provide that due process. Especially if you know that with things the way they are now, it might be a hiccup down the road to cause somebody six months to a year to wait for their due process. But that's the cost of what you're looking at.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you, the reason this strikes a nerve with me is I had another mayor in Fayette County come to me this morning. And say that a citizen of Tyrone called him. And said that he was concerned that we were doing this because I wanted to get more power. And then I hear that.
I didn't.
And it sounds so much familiar, and I'm like, where is that coming from? That's why it strikes a nerve.
Okay, well, I didn't mean.
So I, and I, uh, I elevated, so I'm gonna apologize to you for being elevated.
It's okay, it's all right.
Question, if anybody questions my integrity or my intent, uh, that's what calls and says.
And you know, from these papers, it looks like there's phone numbers on here, it looks like this person must have called everybody.
Um, I will.
I only did it because he is a citizen and I felt even responsible to do it.
Um, I I would like to make a comment because I know Mayor just mentioned. Um, I, I would like to make a comment because I know Mayor just mentioned the word pattern. And that's what I'm thinking about because we just had an agenda item in which, um, we were thinking about taking a proactive approach to solve or to try to mitigate a situation that, that could occur in the future. We're having the same discussion right now where we have an opportunity to take a proactive approach to mitigate something that could potentially go wrong in the future. Yes, we have dodged a bullet thus far, but we have. Uh, our great constitution in the United States has been ratified thirteen times. Right.
A minute.
A minute.
Twenty, twenty-something.
Twenty-seven.
Like anything?
See, twenty-seven times.
I have one right here.
Yeah, look it up. Um, and, and we're talking about a founding document, just like we have a charter. And, and over time, things do change and there are needs for change. You have twenty-seven? That's why I like having her right there. Um, and, and it's just, um, it's like, I, I understand that things have worked in the past. And we all came to Tyrone because of what Tyrone is, like, let's just call it what it is. We love Tyrone the way that Tyrone is. And if, and sometimes in order to sustain that lifestyle that we have, there are some sacrifices that we have to make. If we want to keep lower taxes, then sometimes we have to do, uh, we have to conduct business with larger companies that pay more taxes so our citizens pay less taxes. That's a sacrifice that we sometimes have to make in order to spread that burden. And, and I think that we just need to, to have just a little bit more room to, to entertain some of the potential small changes that might need to be made. Small sacrifices that might have to be made in order to preserve our way of life here in Tyrone. And that's all I really wanted to say about that, so.
All right, any more comments?
Any questions?
Is there a motion? And this is one of two meetings of votes in the event that it passes. Because this is unique in that it takes two meetings.
Correct.
Is there a motion? We do have to vote.
Yes.
Oh, I make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt a town charter amendment of chapter two, article two, regarding the quorum and voting requirements.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I vote, I vote to approve. All right, next item, number six, um, the intergovernmental agreement with Fayette County. Ms. Baker?
It's me.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I jump up on this one? Not literally, but this figure.
Yes.
Uh, and I say that because I received some news today that's, I mean, I don't even know if you as a town have received it. Uh, when this IGA was put together, and let me just say, I've already said it, represent Fayette County. I'm saying it again, represent Fayette County or represent Tyrone. I'm not trying to get in the middle of any type of, uh, uh, representation here, just imparting information. When this IGA was initially put together, uh, there was no opportunity for there being a statewide or county-wide election occurring. It's just municipal elections. As a result, when that occurs generally in odd years, then the cost of the election are borne by the municipalities that require the elections to occur, which includes early voting. The reason I say that there was no statewide election is because the PSC, Public Services Commission seat, that is a statewide office, it was determined early on that that was not going to impact Fayette County in its elections. We just found out today that it's just the opposite. That will be a statewide, therefore a county-wide vote that impacts the election in Fayette County. As a result, you're going to have to have a county-wide election for that PSC seat. Your IGA specifically says the costs you're to bear occur because there's no need for a county-wide election. Well, now there's a need for a county-wide election. And when that occurs, you don't pay any costs. And we give you a caveat. The caveat is if you ask the county elections board to do something above and beyond what they would normally normally do for the county-wide election, there would be some type of nominal cost for that, I'm pretty sure. But if they conducted the election the way they're gonna conduct it because it's a county-wide election and include your election on the ballot and include Peachtree City's election on the Peachtree City ballot all the way down the line, there won't be any cost incurred because they had to conduct those elections anyway. So we did confirm that with the Board of Elections, uh, what is Brianna's last name? I'm sorry.
Garrett. Garrett.
Yeah, we confirmed that on Brianna Garrett today. And we also asked, is this something that I can share with the town of Tyrone this evening? And she said, yes, I can do that. So I'm, I'm confident this is accurate information. It's the savings of the town, I believe, of, is it twenty-six thousand dollars?
Twenty.
And I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this as being something the county is going to absorb because of that PSC race. And I wanted to lead off this item with that because I apologize for not sharing all this, but it literally just happened this afternoon.
Okay.
That's good news.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just like this.
Well, we still have to take.
You said it approved the IGA.
Yeah. All right, Ms. Baker. I'm sorry, we're up to.
Stall your thunder.
This is a biannual, uh, agreement that has to be approved in order for Fayette County to, uh, take care of our elections, to run our elections for us.
Okay.
So does that, does that mean that the, the, the vote will change because we're not approving the, you know, the original amount? Or how should?
If I may, the amount is, is not on the, well, it is on the table, but we're voting for the IGA for Fayette County to run our elections.
It's not.
The, um, the amount would come after the election. This is just an estimate.
Okay.
That they gave us.
So we can make a motion to approve?
The IGA.
Okay. You vote for that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two thousand twenty-five intergovernmental agreement with Fayette County for the conducting of our municipal election.
A second.
Motion's second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Love this forty-nine votes. Next item.
Phillip will be taking this one up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Um, next item on the agenda is a consideration to award the bucket truck to the Hardy Chevrolet, Hardy Chevrolet in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Just a little bit of background on this item. Uh, the existing bucket truck was manufactured in oh-four. And, uh, the maintenance supervisor, uh, Mr. Mitch Bowman noted that this item was one that needed to be replaced and that we were accounting for in the twenty-twenty-three SPOSS. Um, we have obtained quotes, um, and this particular one's also on state contracts. We wanted to make sure we kind of cover all of our bases, uh, with Hardy Chevrolet at a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. Um, and that's under state contract number, um, five nines, SPD, four oh one, nine nine, three seven three. I do that because Scott always reads out the state contract numbers. Um, so bucket truck, uh, this number is nineteen thousand dollars over the twenty-twenty-three SPOSS estimate. So we did, we budgeted a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the SPOSS for the bucket truck. Um, and it came in at a hundred and fifty-nine. Uh, this leaves us, uh, nine thousand over budget in the SPOSS category. I'm sorry, we, we budgeted a hundred and fifty in the, in the SPOSS category. It came in at a hundred and fifty-nine. So it's nine thousand dollars over budget, um, in that category for this year. However, the twenty-twenty-three SPOSS, we did collect this year more than we anticipated. So those SPOSS revenues are of course based on estimates on what we'll receive, what people are paying in taxes in terms of, um, that amount. Um, and so we did get more this year than we anticipated. Uh, proportionally, it's about a hundred and sixteen percent of what we anticipated. So that extra sixteen percent, if we put it to that proportion, that hundred and, um, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars for this particular area that we have collected additionally this year that we did not anticipate, which is more than the nineteen thousand that it is over. Um, so, uh, with that that in mind, staff does, uh, request awarding the bucket truck, uh, to Hardy Chevrolet in the amount of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Phillip, is it, what year is this truck?
It's brand new.
That's twenty-five?
I think it's a twenty-five or it's like, might be a twenty-four.
There's a.
It's a twenty, it's a twenty-four.
Well, twenty, twenty. What about this price of one fifty-nine five?
I, 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 I had asked Scott about that. I think the price, I think the price was just a hundred and fifty-nine even. This is a screen grab from the actual, um, but we, we could modify that to be in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty-nine, five hundred, if, if that makes you not comfortable.
No, I'll.
So, so does this, how many hours does this truck have on it?
Um, with it being brand new, I don't believe it has, uh, I don't believe it has any hours. So it's probably, it's probably minimal. If it has any hours on it, it's, uh, it's probably pretty minimal.
Just a side note, what do they, what are, what are the plans for the two thousand and four bucket truck that they have now?
I, I, I'm not sure. I think it has, it obviously is still functional to some degree. Um, Cody, you know, Van the Wizard that he is, is able to make repairs, but they're becoming more and more costly. I, I imagine at some point that, that, that benefit curve, it's, I think Mitch in purchasing one now is hit the top of the curve, so we'll either surplus it or keep it in reserve for this one to go down.
I asked Scott this, that question the other day, and he said that, um, Mitch was still planning on keeping the other one and using it when they needed to. If that was the case.
We, we also help, um, unusually enough, the county, maybe this has changed, but the county does not have a bucket truck. So we actually do help the county out, uh, when they need a bucket truck and this might, might assist us in that, you know?
And that bucket truck will be on display this Saturday at the Touch Truck Convention. Thank you, sir.
That's great.
Hold your plug. All right. Um, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we award the bucket truck to the Hardy Chevrolet in the amount of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Um, Brendan, next item, please.
Thank you, sir. The next item is approval of a new opioid antagonist training and administration policy. For those, uh, unfamiliar with opioid antagonists, it's commonly called Narcan. Uh, there's a new Georgia law passed last year, OCJA thirty-one dash two, eight dash twenty that states that all qualified government buildings and courthouses shall maintain a supply of at least three unit doses of opioid antagonists and ensure that such supply is available and accessible during regular business hours and outside of regular business hours for all government entity events. This law also requires governmental entities to provide training to their employees regarding the policy and opioid antagonist administration. Pursuant to this new mandate, we have drafted a, uh, the attached policy. And we're seeking your approval for implementation. Uh, once approved, we'll work toward having appropriate staff trained and getting required doses deployed. Uh, Mr. Davenport has reviewed the policy and his suggested revisions have been implemented. Um, fortunately, we have some, uh, through the PD, we have some opioid, some Narcan on hand. So we're not having to go out immediately and buy new doses. But they do expire. I believe they're good for three years or so. So we, there will be a cost going forward, um, that we'll share with the police department. But we do have sufficient doses on hand to get this program started. Um, and as you probably saw in the, in the policy, there are, uh, im- implemented into the policy links for training. I know that Mr. Hunter, you had sent me some information. It sounds like based on the model policy that, and the law, that, uh, the, the, the training resources that are listed in the policy are sufficient. So it's almost like a self-initiated training or self-paced training online, uh, for our employees. But we'll make sure that all of our employees, um, who are gonna be dealing with this issue, um, or, or nearby to Narcan, will, will have the appropriate training. And if we have to call someone in, Mr. Davenport, Mr. Hunter, rather, has provided us with a good local resource or a person to actually come in if that's necessary. Um, this is a very unique, uh, issue. It's a kind of a, uh, it's an unfunded mandate for all the cities and the, and the counties. But, uh, we're fortunate that we've, we've had the Narcan program in place with our PD for a while, so we are familiar with it. Uh, and we do have some on hand to get us started.
So what does that actually mean when, so are they gonna be sticking people with, with needles and, and, uh, tell me what, how that works? I mean, we know with the, uh, you know, with the AFID thing, you know, the out of place, that on here, what exactly will take place?
We actually have a guy in here that's highly qualified to talk about this. Mr., uh, our officer, Coranda, would you mind just answering that question? Just give him some insight from a professional point of view?
Shut up there, no.
Right, it's an inhalant.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, unfortunately, the law, um, it, there, there are liability protections for employees that administer Narcan. Uh, and that's all implemented in the policy. So.
The big thing with Narcan is if you don't need it, it delivers.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the new opioid antagonist training and administration policy.
Ms. Captain?
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion of questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ready? Now, uh, our next public comment period is for any matter that you want to discuss. Again, you have three minutes. We ask that you fill out a form, give it to our clerk. And, uh, Mr. Meyer, we can start with you if you'd still like to come up. Would you, would you like that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. There was a meeting previously when we were putting up the Space Force flag, and I'd wait for my comments in, and you asked me, why didn't I speak when I came up? And you said, next time, just raise your hand and ask.
So I'm sorry if I misled you.
Yeah, so that's what I was playing with today. Um, I, I, I like talked about two things, if you allow me. Um, the first part was I, I watched the last meeting on YouTube. And I was the person posting on Facebook. And I copied and pasted the minutes in there, which mentioned your name, Councilman Hunter. There was nothing, no intent at you or anybody. But my intent was, hey, as my wife and I walk around it all the time, what's happening? I am an engineer, and I walked with a civil engineer around there. And my first question, where's the dam? Yeah, it's a different type of, uh, of, of, of object here. And we went through it. I saw the spillway going off there and the water sploey. I get it, but even near the end, it's only like a foot to two feet deep. At the deepest end, it's nine feet. If that whole dam fell down, it is barely gonna do anything to, to the railroad tracks. Uh, in, in my opinion, as I saw that, the body of water just sank there because the spillway keeps it low all the time. So there's two other things we could do is lower the level of the lake to not be a problem, which I hadn't heard. And the other part is if we're so worried about the railroad tracks, which I get, I get the risk, the railroad hasn't exactly been a friend of this town. And we're gonna protect them, but have we reached out to them saying, hey, was this a problem? Will you help us, uh, alleviate this problem? But with all the trains that block us all the time, all I hear is completely, you know, uh, they seem antagonistic. Um, and then I also say, as I posted that on Facebook, and, and, and I, I knew I could call each and every one of you, but I wanted to get people here. I wanted the town to understand because the information on this isn't there. I dug in deep. I dug in really deep trying to find it. Uh, and yeah, I could call it, but I put it out there. People thought, oh, well, it's being taken down because we're putting a train station here. Two or three people said that, you know, it, it was a lot of misinformation about what people were posting back into there. But if you all saw it, you all had my number, you could have called me and asked, hey, Bert, and I would have readjusted that. I would have put that in there, and none of you five posted anything either. I don't know what says you can't post something, but you know, even you, Dea, hey, Dea Hunter here, uh, anyone have questions, give me a call. And I've been happy to clarify any of that, but that's on my ten. I just wanted people to come and take notice of what was happening. So I apologize if I offended anyone with that. It wasn't the intent. It was, hey, I see something because my wife and I walk around all the time, and I just didn't get it. I still don't get it. Uh, I understand. Uh, I understand, you know, take it down. But again, I have to question, who built it? And those trees have been there several, over a hundred, a hundred years old.
Can I just have one more minute?
No, thank you.
Half a minute.
Half a minute. Okay, and, and I'll leave that alone. But the quorum, I was a councilman up in Illinois. I got, uh, sent to the Desert Storm. And during that timeframe, they gave me a satellite phone. So if any important questions came up, I was able to vote by teleconference. I checked out Georgia's open meeting laws and it does state in there that a councilperson, and they actually talk more about counties, uh, they can miss out to two meetings a year and still be able to vote if they call in to do so. And if they're sick on an extended amount of time, they can go ahead and have a longer period with, with, with the doctor's approval. I think that covers you guys completely here, if any of that happens.
That's helpful and I'd like to have our attorney comment on that.
Thank you for my action thirty seconds.
Thank you. And could I get your phone number before you leave?
No, you're sure. I, I put it on the sheet there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, are there any staff comments?
I have a couple. Does any other staff members have anything?
Chief.
Chief.
Okay.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chief.
I think some of you have already met her. She's very busy in the field training officer program, but this is Officer Penny Mitch. She comes to us from Peachtree City, got experience in law enforcement, code enforcement, fantastic employee. So just wanted to introduce her to all of you face to face.
Thank you, welcome.
So free, so free to talk.
I don't have anything to say, but thank you for allowing this opportunity. I've planned to be here for a long time.
Very good.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Anyone else? All right, I got just a couple of, uh, just event things. Uh, this Saturday on the twenty-second, from eleven to two, there's a touch of truck event benefiting Bloom. Uh, we're asking that you bring, uh, gently used or new denim or jeans. Uh, there will be a touch of truck event, there will be, I believe, food trucks, a family fun event. And then on the twenty, let me see, let me get my bearings right. Um, on the twenty-fifth, next Tuesday night at six, in this room, we will have our quarterly talk of the town event, uh, where we're gonna, we're gonna talk about, uh, uh, some project updates and I'm going to cover House Bill five eighty-one. Uh, for people who are uninformed on that, um, it's been a popular topic, so I'm going to cover that uh, as our talking point for that night. And then we have, starting April, I know this is a long way out, April twenty-second, our third session of Tyrone One-O-One will begin. It'll be Tuesday nights at six PM, also in this room. And registration for that is open at tyrongega.gov forward slash Tyrone One-O-One. We have roughly twenty-five applicants at this point. I'd like to get it up to at least thirty. Um, so we do have some openings there, but they're, they have filled up pretty quickly so far. So we're looking forward to that program going on. And I believe that's all I have. Thank y'all.
Okay. Any other staff comments? Any council comments? Okay. And there is no need for executive session tonight. Um, but before we depart, I know that what Mr. Minor mentioned about, um, dialing in, that might help us in a situation where attendance would be the problem, uh, wouldn't help us on recusal. What is, do you know if that the state AG has, it's, uh, has issued an opinion and what is your opinion?
The thing about looking up open meetings laws is you have to understand what you're looking at when you're doing your research. State agencies are treated one way, county and city governments are treated another way. State agencies for years have been able to conduct their business via teleconference. They can vote via teleconference and they can conduct their meetings as far as being across the state of Georgia because it's a state agency. Counties and cities and towns have never had the ability to do that. What they have the ability to do is while it is correct according to that provision with respect to cities and counties, you can miss up to two meetings a year medically related, out of the jurisdiction, whatever the case may be. But looking closely at the language, it also says while you may dial in and participate in the meeting, it does not count towards a forum. You are still absent. So you are participating, but it doesn't count towards your forum. Here's where it gets really dicey. I have advised all of my government clients over the years, as long as it's been in place. If you're not here to count for a forum, you can participate, but there's nothing that says you can vote via telephone. So I have advised all of my clients that you participate via phone, that's all you can do. The voting takes place here for the people that count toward the forum. I will say this, not every attorney advises their clients that way. I have seen other government entities vote via telephone. And I can tell you, when that case comes up because the vote didn't go the way petition didn't want, that's going to be challenged. And until that's challenged, we don't have the correct management. But my position has been and remains, if you don't count it toward a forum, you don't have the right to vote on the issue.
Yeah, when we were at the Call Vincent Center for our initial training, I remember this, this issue coming up and someone mentioned that if you're on the other end of the phone, someone can have you at gunpoint, you know, conperson you to make a vote and no one would know that that was the case. And, and that, that's why they said, that's one good example of why that's not, that's spraying them down the front, I think is what they said.
All right.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just, I just feel like this meeting, half of it was pointed towards me because I was out last week, which I'm very seldom out. I was sick. I called Brandon and I, two or three days before our meeting, and I told him I had the flu, but I could come, but I'd probably make everybody sick. And I do apologize for being out, but I couldn't help it because I was sick.
I'm, I'm sorry, you feel that way, that was, uh, you don't need to apologize.
Well, I do because I feel like it was, all of it was directed toward me.
I get you. Um, all right, um, any council, any other council comments? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.